The time is just after 10 o'clock and I will declare the special town meeting of October 30, 2021, open. And... There we go. Beverages are permitted in the caf... Beverages and food are permitted in the cafeteria. They're not permit... I think I'm getting... Picking up on a couple of microphones. Oh, that's the outside speaker. We'll get to that. The... We'll probably ignore water bottles and lifesavers and things in the auditorium here, but please pick up your trash. We don't want to get in trouble with the schools. There's no smoking allowed on school grounds. Please, actually, I'm going to do my own. Please mute or turn off your cell phones. Mine isn't... Mine isn't muting very fast. There we go. There's no applause or outbursts except to recognize people, so this isn't the popularity contest. We're here to discuss the business of the town and vote. Please use clickers for voters. You are... If you... If you're... This is your first town meeting. The last couple of town meetings, we've had these electronic clickers. And while I'm on the subject, we've tested it, the electronic clickers. If you don't feel comfortable being inside at all, there's some folks sitting just outside the door here. That's allowed. You can also sit socially distanced in the cafeteria. There is sound and a small video monitor there, but your vote will pick up if you're in the cafeteria. We also ask, again, in here, we actually have a good crowd. Please remember, not everyone wants to sit near other people, so try to socially distance a little unless you're with friends or family. And... Wrong clicker. We have some special rules for the special town meeting due to COVID. If you've been sick in the last 10 days with COVID symptoms or you're actively sick, obviously you shouldn't be here. I'm requiring face coverings over your mouth and nose while you're inside. If that's a problem, again, you can sit just outside the door. Your votes will be counted. Again, while you're waiting in lines and while you're sitting, please remember to try to keep a little bit of distance. And usually, we have a three-minute time limit. And I've reduced it the last couple of town meetings and this one to two minutes to try to move things along more quickly. And I will move myself along. Cast to characters. My name is David Walrath. I'm the elected town moderator. Laura Spear, who's sitting here, is the deputy moderator. If you have any questions about procedures and you don't want to call a point of order or get my attention, you can ask Laura. And if she can't answer, she'll get my attention. Behind me, we have Linda Hathaway, the town clerk. She'll be... She's the official minute taker. Her assistant, Deb Seith, is out in the cafeteria, I believe. At the front tables, we have the chairman of the board of the select board, Ellen Sturgis; Erica Benedict, the chair of the finance committee; Denise Dombrowski, the town administrator; and Amy Quesal, the new town council for Stowe. I add in... They're sitting in the front row. Our current select board, I'd like to recognize them. And the finance committee, which makes a recommendation on each article to town meeting. And we'll also be hearing from capital planning. Steve Jelinek is the chair. The planning board, Lori Clark is the chair, and the community preservation committee with Ben Antle, the chair. So our first vote, we have three non-voters who are town employees who we'd like to have address the meeting. We do this as a vote, just to make it clear. This is a legislative session, and you as registered town voters are here as legislators. No one else is... Other... There's some state laws and town charter provisions, but generally, other people aren't allowed to address the meeting without permission of the meeting. So I'd like us to practice with our voters and take a vote whether or not we will allow these people to address the meeting. And we will start voting now. And we are open, so please vote green for yes, red for no. Three, four, and five will not register, even if they show up on your clicker. If you see the number one or the number two, that means your vote registered with the voting. If you have a problem with that, please let Laura or one of the checkers out in the cafeteria know. And... I wanted to... And I'm going to keep it open about another 15 seconds. And just a couple more seconds. And I'm going to close voting. And we had 180 votes, 172 yes and eight no. And so that requires a majority vote and the motion passes. I was going to say next slide, but I have the clicker here. I'd like to thank... Stowe TV has managed all the AV and they're also at town meeting and they're also... Will be televising it. So we'd like to thank them, the checkers. Ron Eld, who's sitting behind me, he set up and is running the clicker system. He's our... The town IT expert. And Chris Spear is running the computer for the slideshows. So this is kind of long, but it's pretty simple. If, other than the two-minute check, if you've been to previous town meetings, it's no different. If you're new, we have a town meeting handbook that tells you all about town meeting and how to do things and what's expected. There's a box in here and another box of them out in the hallway. But we ask that that you avoid being repetitive. You direct all questions to me. That'll be important because we have a couple of contentious articles. And I will direct them to who I think is appropriate to answer. Sorry about that. Identify yourself when when you're speaking, sorry, here. So when I... If I come up to talk, I'd say, "David Walrath, 30 Samuel Prescott Drive." If you feel anything... After a half hour of debate on any article, I'll ask if anyone in the room wants to call a question. But if you feel that things have become repetitive or all the interesting questions have been asked, you can do that too. You just have to get in line with everyone else. And again, if you have any other questions, feel free to ask Laura Spear. Or if you feel something wrong is happening, you can make a... Get my attention and ask why something is being done or suggest that something improper is being done. And I believe we are ready for the first motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the reading of the warrant and return of the constable thereon be waived but made a part of the record of this meeting and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading each article in its entirety.
We have a motion in a second. Traditionally, the moderator would read each article in the warrant. You should have paper warrants. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, we can open the voting. That'll take a second. And the vote is open. We'll keep it open for about 20 seconds. And about five more seconds. And we can close. And that is 166 yes and six no, so the motion passes. Now we're ready for... Oh, before we do Article 1, I did have a note here. For anyone that hasn't noticed, Bob Larkin passed away very recently. So something to keep an eye out for in the paper. Bob was on the Stowe Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust and on the Community Preservation Committee for many years. And I believe that's everything. We're ready for a motion on Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate pursuant to any applicable statute $170.10 to be expended by the town administrator to pay for unpaid bills of the town from previous fiscal years.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we can go to a vote. I'm just going to make a comment. This will require a nine-tenths vote. It's to discourage towns from not paying bills from prior years. So we can open the voting. The voting just opened, so make sure that you see a one or a two on your voting card. And about five more seconds. And we can close. We have 203 yes and three no. This requires a nine-tenths vote. And it... I'll declare it as passed by a nine-tenths vote. Article 2, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of addressing the deficiencies in the Barton Road Dam in Stowe, including the reimbursement of accounts, payment of professional administrative and construction expenses, and any other costs incidental or related thereto.
I'm going to take a recommendation recommendation from capital planning first.
Mr. Moderator, capital planning did not take a vote on this specific article, but I would remind the town that we originally recommended the town support expenditure of funds to repair the Barton Road Dam at the Springtown meeting, which I believe was two years ago.
Thank you. Now we can take any questions or other debate. Yes, sir.
My name is Dan Barstow, 99 Pine Point Road, member of the Lake Boone Commission and the Lake Boone Association. I would just like to praise the town for the efficiency in which this repair was done. Within 24 hours. It was a major operation. We really appreciate Denise's work, Kathy, the highway department, the police, everybody. It was very impressive. And I just wanted to praise the town for that quality of that response to this problem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can start the vote. I will let you know. The vote is open for 20 seconds. And about five more seconds. And we can close the vote. This was 207 yes and five no. And the motion passes. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, establishing a senior tax work-off program for taxpayers who are over 60 years of age and further to allow an approved representative for persons physically unable to provide such services to the town to be effective for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2021.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or other debate? Seeing none, we can open the vote. I'll let you know when we're ready. And the vote is open for 20 seconds. And again, while we're waiting, if you really don't want to be inside, there are some folks sitting outside the door and your vote will count if you're out there. You can also sit in the cafeteria. And I've actually tested my own clicker that it works sitting in the middle of the room, well away from the checkers. And I think we can close the vote. And we have 211 yes and seven no. This requires a majority vote and the motion passes. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N, establishing a tax work-off program for veterans and to allow an approved representative for persons physically unable to provide such services to the town to be effective for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2021.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on veteran property tax work-off? Seeing none, we can go to a vote. We'll open the vote for 20 seconds now. And again, if you see a one or a two on your voting card, that means it registered with the voting system. And five more seconds. And we can close. And we had a vote of 214 yes and six no. And the motion passes. This required a majority vote. This next one, before we take it, I'm going to make a small apology. This is going to be a long read because there's some minor changes between what you have printed in the warrant and the actual motion. And it's a long motion, so...
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate, transfer, borrow, or otherwise the sum of $4 million to acquire for open space and recreation purposes approximately 115 plus or minus acres of land on Randall Road in Stowe, shown as the entirety of Assessor's Map R11 Lot 11A and a portion of Assessor's Map R11 Lot 25B-3 and described in a deed recorded with the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Book 67309, Page 266, and for costs incidental or related thereto, including legal title, appraisal, engineering, and other costs or fees. And to fund said acquisition to appropriate and transfer $2 million from the community preservation... Sorry. Thank you. From the community preservation unreserved fund balance and $300,000 from the community preservation open space fund balance, with the remainder of the acquisition cost being funded by gifts and/or grants. And further, that to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow all or a portion of the funds as authorized under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue notes or bonds of the town therefore, that the said board is further authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this vote. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs or to take any other action relative thereto. And further, to authorize the select board to acquire said parcels of land by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain with the care, custody, and control of approximately 24 acres to be vested in the Conservation Commission for passive recreation and open space purposes under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C. And with the remaining 90 acres, more or less, of said land to be in the care, custody, and control of the Recreation Commission for active recreation and parks under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, which parcels are approximately shown on the map and the warrant and shall be shown on a surveyed plan recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. And to authorize the select board to convey conservation restrictions and/or easements as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 12A, meeting the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 184, Sections 1... Excuse me. Sections 31 to 33, and/or enter into lease agreements, which may exceed three years of portions of the recreation land for golf and related purposes. And further, to authorize the select board or its designee to apply for, accept, and expend any funds that may be provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and/or other public or private sources to defray all or a portion of the cost of said acquisition, including, but not limited to, grants and/or reimbursements under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act, PL 88-578, Chapter 132A, Section 11, and/or any other state or federal program in any way connected with the scope of this article, or receive gifts as may be available for reimbursement to the town for these purposes.
We have a motion and a second. Does capital planning wish to make their recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, capital planning voted unanimously to recommend the town support the acquisition of land on the Stowe Acres North Course that is addressed by this article. We recognize that population growth and the resulting pressure for land development mean that changes to Stowe Acres are inevitable. And therefore, we understand that our community is approaching a crossroads in terms of the makeup of this town. We feel that preserving Stowe's rural character is critically important and thus, capital planning supports the use of Community Preservation Act funds to ensure that future generations of residents are able to continue to reap the benefits of open space and natural beauty that we have all enjoyed. Furthermore, we appreciate the effort, creativity, and commitment that all the parties to this project have put into achieving this extraordinary opportunity for us, including the reading of the warrant. And we urge the town to support it.
Thank you. And while we're bringing up... We have a short presentation on this. While we're bringing that up, the reason that I went over and asked Erica, and I've been bringing up capital planning, under our bylaws, we're not allowed to take action on any article without a recommendation from the finance committee. And on capital items, a recommendation from capital planning. All of the finance committee's recommendations are printed in your warrant. And I think we're about ready. Go ahead.
Good morning and thank you. I'm Kathy Sparra, 74 West Acton Road and Stowe's Conservation Director. Today, you are being asked to take an historic vote for the Town of Stowe to approve the second and final phase of the Stowe Acres project. And that involves the North Course on Randall Road. So Chris said this may work, but it didn't. I'll just say next slide. Stowe Acres is the largest remaining property in a single ownership in Stowe at 326 acres. And one thing that I have learned over the years is that large parcels tend to attract grand schemes. Residents of Stowe have been concerned about the future of Stowe Acres for a very long time, longer than the 20 years I have lived here. About 10 years ago, town officials were approached by the former owner of Stowe Acres who was seeking upward of $20 million for a conservation restriction on the entire property. When town officials said that that was beyond our means, the next proposal was from a Cape Cod resort developer who wanted to put 650 to 750 residential units on the property. I still have that plan. More recently, it became clear that the current owners of Stowe Acres were fielding multiple offers from large-scale housing developers, including Toll Brothers, who wanted to build two, not one, two Regencies of Stowe-type developments on the property, a 40B on the driving range and a large subdivision on the South Course. Town officials approached Stowe Acres and began to talk about alternatives that might be better received by the town, might meet more of our long-term goals, and conserve the most important parts of the property. Stowe Acres came to the table voluntarily and set aside other offers to have these conversations. Next slide. Shortly thereafter, a collaboration formed that included town officials, Stowe Conservation Trust, the owner of Stowe Acres, and a local housing developer, MCO and Associates. They were interested in developing the property and willing to work with the town. We have worked for the past two years in partnership to develop a comprehensive vision for the property that would advance the town's housing, conservation, and recreation goals, would be affordable for taxpayers and financially feasible for Stowe Acres. Next slide. Last spring, town meeting overwhelmingly approved the first phase of this project, which was the purchase of a conservation restriction on the South Course of Stowe Acres, ensuring its protection while allowing it to remain in private ownership on the tax rolls and in use as a golf course. That vote was contingent on a subsequent town meeting vote approving the North Course agreement, which is what we are voting on today. Next slide, please. Since last town meeting, the Town of Stowe and Stowe Acres have negotiated an agreement to purchase 115 acres of the North Course, shown here in red. The remaining 62 acres of the North Course outlined in the white dotted line would be sold separately by Stowe Acres for development. The portion of the North Course to be purchased by the town would be divided, as shown on the map. The driving range and the adjacent wetlands would be held by the Conservation Commission, with the remainder of the land held by the Recreation Commission. In drawing that line, we've given careful thought both to the proposed uses of the property as well as the need to maintain the appraised value of the two parcels by giving them both frontage on Randall Road. This is necessary to maximize the potential for the town to receive the necessary grants to assist with the purchase. Next slide, please. The conservation parcel consists of the existing driving range and the adjacent wetlands. We have negotiated with Stowe Acres that they can continue to use the existing driving range for up to five years while they work to relocate it to a new home on the South Course. This is a positive aspect from the town's perspective as it will give us time to plan for the anticipated wetland inhabitat restoration of the driving range and seek grant funding to carry that out. The existing parking lot would serve the trail network for both the North and the South Course and also provide a viewing area out over the wetlands. Next slide, please. As for the recreation parcel, 90 acres of the North Course would be dedicated to future active and passive recreation. Stowe Acres will retain the right to operate nine holes of golf on the parcel for up to 10 years. However, the remaining land would be available for the town to use immediately after closing. One thing I want to stress is that even though the parcel is proposed to be divided now for grant reasons, we do expect that the town will be engaging in a master planning process for the entire property that will include areas to be set aside for open space, trails, and community recreation facilities. We've heard a lot of good ideas from residents about the future recreational uses of the property. And we want to really give everyone a chance to weigh in on the overall vision and use of that property. Next slide, please. As I said at the outset, we are proposing to purchase the majority of the North Course. The remaining land is being sold separately by Stowe Acres to MCO and Associates, who is planning to build a mixed residential housing development on about 10% to 15% of the overall Stowe Acres property. We've had an opportunity to work with the developer as he has created a concept plan for the project that would provide for a variety of housing types focused on seniors, focused on empty nesters, and those desiring smaller units than what we see typically being built in Stowe today. Many of those units would be affordable and would help the town toward its 10% affordable housing requirement. We have a memorandum of understanding with the developer and Stowe Acres that commit them to that overall vision as well as to a maximum of 189 units on the property. Your vote today in no way approves that development plan. There'll still be all of the usual kind of process of review by the zoning board of appeals, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, DEP, and others. And as part of that, all of the site issues, including water, wastewater, and traffic, will be addressed. Next slide. I want to briefly review the terms of our agreement with Stowe Acres. I want to briefly review the terms of our agreement with Stowe Acres. So we are proposing to purchase a hundred and fifteen acres of the North Course for three point five, three-five million dollars. The closing would be in September of twenty-twenty-two, which will give the town time to apply for grants and do fundraising. Stowe Acres would retain the right to use the driving range for up to five years and the golf course for up to ten, as I said earlier. And during that period, the town would have access for town uses on the remaining land, survey, planning, and also public trail access. And then finally, Stowe Acres will take a tax deduction for the difference between the appraised value of the land and the price that the town is paying. Next slide, please. Looking at the whole Stowe Acres project, both North and South, this is how the finances break down. So you've already approved a conservation restriction purchase on the South Course for one point five million dollars using existing CPA funds. The North Course purchase price will be made up of two and a half million dollars in CPA funds, and just over a million dollars in grants and fundraising, which we still need to secure prior to the closing. And that process will begin in earnest as soon as next week, if you vote in favor today. Overall, the total cost to the town for the entire project on the North and South Course is just four million dollars in community preservation funds on hand, and will secure real estate valued at ten point one million, based on appraisal. And the town administrator has agreed to backstop up to five hundred thousand dollars of the million that the town needs to raise, with borrowing within the budget if necessary, but we are hoping that that will not be necessary. Next slide. So the motion you are voting today is lengthy, thank you, Ellen, but contains the following provisions. You vote to purchase the hundred and fifteen acres of the North Course for the total purchase price plus costs, subject to the retained golf rights by Stowe Acres. You will vote to expend two and a half million dollars in community preservation funds toward the purchase price. You will authorize the town to apply for grants and accept donated funds for the remainder of the purchase price. Divide the land between the Conservation Commission and the Recreation Commission, as shown on the map. And then authorize the town to grant easements, enter into agreements, and convey the conservation restriction as required by the Community Preservation Act statute. Next slide, please. The project enjoys the unanimous support of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, and the other boards shown on this slide. Next slide. So to wrap up, we feel that there are multiple community goals that are advanced by the Stowe Acres Initiative, including open space, recreation, and affordable housing, and we have appreciated the amount of community support that we've had through the multiple forums that we've had on this project. In the end, we've been able to negotiate the acquisition or protection of more than eighty-five percent of the property in a manner that we feel is affordable for the town. Next slide. But more than that has been the positive spirit of collaboration, all during COVID, that has resulted in a comprehensive vision for this large property, rather than seeing it sold off piecemeal for development, or having the town in a position where it has just a hundred and twenty days to exercise Chapter sixty-one rights with potentially a huge purchase price. I want to publicly thank all of our partners, but especially Stowe Acres, for their willingness to come to the table and think creatively about how our respective needs can be met. Behind what may seem simple has been a tremendous amount of give and take over many months. Lastly, and I guess last slide, it has really been an honor and a privilege for me to represent the town and the planning team in bringing this project to you today, and we ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Two things before we take any debate. I think I'm getting a little bit of feedback between my mic and the outdoor speaker, and the Selectmen wish to make a recommendation.
The members of the Select Board unanimously and enthusiastically support the acquisition of the North Course at Stowe Acres, and urge all of you to vote yes on this Article five. We urge all to vote in favor of this land acquisition because, among other reasons, there will be a conservation and open space protection of approximately eighty-five percent of the three hundred and twenty-six acre golf course, as Kathy just presented. While the town is not purchasing nor directly involved with the sixty-five acre housing parcel, the village-style and affordable housing being proposed are central pillars for the town's vision of this unique and dynamic property. The price is right, and a larger housing development is very likely if we vote no. Importantly, no matter how much we plan as a board or as a town, certain decisions and timelines remain in the hands of private landowners. And when these private landowners are ready to exercise their rights, and they choose to work with the town to collaborate on our collective future, we must take the opportunity to build something great. And that is exactly what this acquisition plan is. It is the best plan that permits the private owner of Stowe Acres to exercise their land rights while ensuring conservation, open space, recreation, constrained development, and an increase in affordable homes in Stowe. It's a collaboration with the best interests of Stowe at the heart of the transaction. In conclusion, the Select Board unanimously and enthusiastically urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Now we're ready for any questions or other debate on the motion. Yes, sir.
Yes, hi. Dave Austin, Alton Hasting Street. The CPA is going to put in two point five million dollars. I know that that's not the only thing that's on the CPA agenda. Would that wipe out our balance? So that's what I'm saying, what's in the kitty right now? And if we take out two point five million, what do we got left for future projects?
Do we have someone from CPC who can answer that?
Nineteen Highlybrook Road, Chair of the CPC. Yes, currently, in this fiscal year, there's three million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in the CPA accounts. Factoring in passage of this article, the balances will be one million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. This doesn't take into account the fact that on November fifteenth, we'll receive our state match, and we'll have our town surcharge together, and we'll have a better idea of what is being replenished into the fund. But last year, the replenishment was seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And this year, we're expecting it to be significantly greater, because last year's replenishment didn't include a full year of the new higher rate that the CPA is collecting on the state level. And it's been a very busy real estate market, and that affects how much the state is able to raise. So, you know, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think we're going to replenish far past the seven hundred and sixty thousand last year. I wouldn't be surprised if we end up over nine hundred. But until November fifteenth, I can't give you the exact replenishment rate. So in short, we're going to, from, well, in short, the CPC felt that the opportunity was worth the decline of funds. It won't completely drain our resources, and they are being replenished, we're expecting, fairly significantly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, over here. Mr. Gold.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Lenny Goldar, sixty-seven, Old Bolton Road. Couple of questions. It's a good project, I support it, but two questions. One of it is, it's partly dependent on outside funding. What recourse do we have if for some reason we don't get all of the outside funding? And the other question is, do we have any legal protection if for some reason we're not able to go through with this plan? Because we did have a bad experience once before years ago with another project, and we ended up getting sued. So I'd be very concerned that we had some kind of legal protection or disclaimer if for some reason, you know, the project didn't go through.
Ms. Spera, can you address that?
So we've been very upfront with Stowe Acres from the outset, that we will need to raise the remainder of the funds, and any PNS that we enter into would have a fundraising contingency. If we don't raise the funds, we won't be able to go forward. But frankly, I think at this point, we feel like failure is not an option. So there are four significant state grant programs we have the opportunity to apply for, for both conservation and recreation. Those range in the funding amounts from four, five hundred thousand dollars all the way up to over a million. We are optimistic about our chances. We have already heard that the State Executive Office of Energy and Environment thinks this is a fabulous project. So they are the ones who control those grant funds, and we will do everything we can to get them.
Can we put something, something in there, though, that says if for some reason this doesn't happen, that the Town of Stowe is not, you know, legally liable if the project doesn't succeed?
Yeah, there will be a fundraising contingency. So, you know, if we aren't able to raise the funds, we will not go forward, and they understand that.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Pam Weathers, eighty-nine, West Acton Road. First of all, I think this is great that everybody worked together. It's marvelous to see that happening. But I have a question that I just wanted to know. So if the town owns the land, assuming this goes through, that's the driving range and still the North Course that's still going to be operated by Stowe Acres, is that gratis to Stowe Acres? Is there a fee coming back to the town? Do they rent it? Is there something that's a remuneration for them, not owning the land, but the town owning it? Can you explain that, please?
Ms. Spera, can you?
Sure. Part of the negotiation with Stowe Acres was that they would continue to operate the golf course and the driving range, and the value of that to them is essentially consideration in the purchase price. So we received a lower price for the town's acquisition in exchange for allowing that operation to go forward. So they will not pay us, you know, the opportunity to run the golf course.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Yeah, Richard Fishman, four-four-seven Taylor Road. My first question is, why is the town not acquiring that last piece on the right, instead of giving it to the, or not giving it, but why isn't the town buying the whole thing?
Ms. Spera.
Essentially because we couldn't afford it. The developer's paying seven point seven million dollars for his piece. I think also, the variety of folks that were on the team felt like it was a better thing for the town to have a mix of goals met by this project, and the opportunity to have some of our housing needs met was viewed as a positive.
Okay, my second question. Why is, the town does not have ten percent affordable housing yet. Why isn't the priority to make affordable housing there first, and then what's left? It looks like the plan is, the affordable housing is sort of the second tier. Why isn't, why isn't the other way around? In other words, why don't you accommodate, like, make sure you have, fill up the, you know, like, meet the quota, and then see what's left, and have a developer?
I think Mr. Stedman can answer that.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good question. So there's, I have two answers to that. One is that if you look at some of the housing production plans and the other plans around housing and what our needs are in Stowe, one of the things that shines through is that we need a diversity of housing types that meet a bunch of different incomes. So obviously, capital A, affordable housing, the type that actually meets our quota under the state law, is important, but it was, it's a bigger picture than that, too. I'm sorry, I'll get closer. So it's a bigger picture than just meeting those needs. Nonetheless, this project, the way it was designed, especially with some of the sixty-two, the units that are marketed for folks over sixty-two as rentals, all of those count on our subsidized housing inventory, which is that state quota. So we really, in the original thinking here and working with MCO, we tried to design this project in a way that we could reach our ten percent. DHCD will, they'll be the final ones to do some of the math, but we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to reach that ten percent with this project, with that mix of rental and ownership.
Thank you. One more question.
I'm going to take someone else. We'll take you again in just a sec. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, I'm Peg Lorenzo, happy forty-year resident of Peabody Drive. I also have a background in affordable housing, having worked for the federal government in Hartford, Connecticut, and the Massachusetts government in Boston under massed housing. I am very, very sad to see the words "partnership" and such enthusiastic backing for a dream, a vision. This vision has not experienced the due diligence that our town council probably should have recommended. We don't know anything about the linkage to the affordable housing developer, his financial pro forma, his acceptability by the Affordable Housing Commission in Boston. The linkage is questionable, and the lack of due diligence, and no answers, I think mostly for Mr. Stedman at public meetings. Solid people have asked questions like, will there be preference for the affordable housing for our local residents? The answer to rental units is no, by law, there can't be. Will there be preference toward the purchasable houses? Only if there's no grant money or subsidy money from Massachusetts or from the federal government. If there is participation of a government agency, even the purchase units will have to be fair and open, with no particular preference to our Stowe residents. This parcel of land is loved by all of us. The conservation aspects of it, I think, have been discussed in great detail, but there's been no diligence at all, or answers to the questions of the public at your televised meetings. For example, has the school administration been asked their opinion of impact or their statistics? The answer to the twenty-sixth October meeting was, we haven't even called them yet. A person from Cross Street asked the question, have there been any studies or designs or input for traffic? The answer was, we'll do that after we get this approved. Finally, a very solid person from Whitman Street asked, what's going to happen to our venture if the developer fails? And the answer from the developer was, there's such a diversity of units and styles, it can't possibly fail. As an old dirt salesman myself, twenty years acquiring land for the federal government, these are not good answers. The diligence has not been completed here. And my final suggestion and comment, Mr. Moderator Walrath, is I propose we table this notion until the diligence is completed.
Are you making a motion or just making a recommendation? It'd probably be easier-
I'm not a town meeting pro. I can't answer that. I'm hoping you can.
Well, a motion to table would require a majority vote of the meeting. If you just wait and allow the whole project to be voted on, it requires a two-thirds vote, so one-third of the people would cause it to fail, and then presumably, they would go back.
As we continue with that debate, if you'll give me permission to stand at the microphone again, I might propose that we table the notion. But I don't think we've heard everybody who wants to speak.
Thank you. Yes, we have someone waiting behind you. We'll let-
Ross Perry, Fourth Circuit Drive. First of all, I want to commend the Planning Board and Conservation, and the numerous other committees. This is real planning. This is what we expect from a Planning Board and Conservation, to come up with an option instead of waiting for a developer to buy the parcel and come in with a proposal for two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred houses, and then have to react to their plan. We've got the developer reacting to our plan, and I think that is huge. There are some concerns about questions not being answered. I believe those all get addressed during the permitting process. So we're not going off half-baked. We're starting with a good plan, and we'll have chances for Planning Board, Conservation Board of Health. I know how they work. They are diligent in being sure that everybody protects the town- They are diligent in being sure that everybody protects the town, and I'm confident that when the plan comes forward, that will happen. So I strongly suggest that this is a much better alternative than waiting for something that we may not want and have to react to it. So I encourage everyone to vote yes for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else. Is there anyone else who has a question or comment? Yes.
Yes, I would just like to comment, I would urge you not to table this article. The article you're voting on has nothing to do with the development piece. That is a separate piece being purchased by a private developer that will go through the public permitting process. If you vote to table this, we lose those 115 acres, and likely it will all become a development. So please do not table this. I urge you all to vote in favor of this article.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, over here.
Hi, pardon me, Kevin Gross, 110 Little Drive. Just a quick question. It's a fabulous project. I'm very much in favor of it. Is there, the reason behind the desire of the owner to enter into this agreement with the town, is there-
A little bit louder, if you could.
I'm sorry. The reason behind the owner wanting to enter into this agreement with the town for the future of this parcel of land, is there a trend going on here? Is there less interest in the public engulfing? And is there a reason for us to anticipate that other golf courses in Stowe may, in the near future, want to cash out? Will we find ourselves in a position of trying to preserve those lands as well?
Ms. Vera.
I can try to address that. So I think if you look in the long term, you see a trend toward decreasing interest in golf, and I think all of the golf courses were wrestling with that. Because of COVID, golf use has actually gone up dramatically. The number of rounds of golf that are happening right now are much higher. As Peter Brown from Stowe Acres said, every day is Saturday at Stowe Acres right now. Nobody knows if that's going to continue, and I think there's worry that it won't. You know, we experienced the same thing in the use of our lands and our trails during COVID, and that has declined. So, you know, people are still working from home, they can still slip out and play golf, but I think long-term it is a trend we need to be worried about. This is obviously the largest of the golf courses, so I think, you know, from the town's perspective, it's the most significant potential for change.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sisbena, 57 Old Bolton Road. I just had a question. Do any of the conditions for the town's purchase of the two parcels include any stipulations for what happens on the development portion? For example, if people have concerns about, you know, making sure that the affordable housing is for very low-income affordable housing and not just median income or something like that, is that at all factored into the PNS for this portion? Or is all of those details just part of what happens with the development proposal itself, which will come later?
Kathy, can you?
Yeah, so I guess just to repeat again kind of what Denise said, our purchase and sales agreement with Stowe Acres will only be about these 115 acres. The developer has a separate purchase and sales agreement that he has already signed with Stowe Acres that govern his piece. The only connection is that we have a memorandum of understanding with Stowe Acres and with the developer that commits everybody to the overall vision that we've laid out here, you know, interconnections of trails, things like that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. This anticipates borrowing money, so it'll require a two-thirds vote, and I'm going to open voting now. And again, actually, for about another 15 seconds. Something I forgot to mention is that internally, we have this on Zoom, and if you're hard of hearing, we're using the automatic closed captioning of Zoom, and we have it on the large television here and on the small television in the cafeteria. So if anyone needs to, there's a couple of seats down in the front row wishes to listen, and I think we are ready to close voting. Well, I count 240, well, the computer counts 243 yes and 17 no, and that's clearly greater than two-thirds, so the motion passes. Do we have a motion for Article 6?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 6.3 to read in its entirety as stated in Sections A, B, and C of this article, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on the motion under Article 6? Seeing none, we can, we will, we have, do have a one speaker. Yes, sir, over here.
Brian Martenson, 43 Pomposidica Road. I've lived in the Lower Village-
A little louder, if you could, please.
Brian Martenson, 43 Pomposidica Road. I've lived in the Lower Village for the past 30 years. I'm one of the few people that can actually walk there and do my shopping and meet friends, whatever, and I love it. This amendment seems so tiny. Why am I even talking about it? Because it's not. It opens the door for all sorts of unintended consequences. This amendment has been put together very quickly. This amendment has been put together extremely quickly, almost a knee-jerk reaction to our zoning enforcement officer trying to actually enforce this law. And there has been inadequate researching, benchmarking, or meaningful input from Lower Village residents. It's, in addition, not consonant with Stowe's stated long-term vision. And more importantly, yeah, again, inadequate consideration of these consequences, unintended 15 years ago, we decided to adopt this bylaw. We did not want internally illuminated signs, and it served us well. You may be interested to know that I walk in the Lower Village most every day. There's about 36 active businesses in the Lower Village. Only nine of those businesses have signs that are internally illuminated. That means 26, 27 businesses fully comply with this law and have been for a long time. Why would we want to get rid of a law that has been so successful in eliminating nuisance lighting for all these years? Why would we want to open up the Lower Village so everybody can put internally illuminated signs? Imagine walking through the Lower Village if that happened. It would fundamentally change the look and the feel of that Lower Village. So regarding this bylaw, I hear that oftentimes I've heard Acton being used as an example. Acton allows these types of signs, why can't we? Well, let me list some towns that have bylaws exactly like ours.
Could we wrap it up, your last two minutes?
Yes. Exactly like ours that prohibit internally illuminated signs. Bolton, Lancaster, Boxborough, Sudbury, Concord, Lincoln, Wayland, that's just a few. The trend is to continue banning these signs in zoning discussions.
All right.
I don't think this is ready for prime time. I think we should table it until the next town meeting so further work can be done, and I urge you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Hi, Mike Jordan, 166 Packard Road. I'd like to very much agree with the previous questioner. Businesses are already allowed to have signs. The only difference is that they're supposed to be externally illuminated.
A little louder, please.
Yeah, sure. The kind of signs that are currently banned in the bylaw, the internally illuminated signs are often things like neon signs, things like that. They don't have any place in Stowe's Lower Village. If the business owner wants to advertise the fact that they're open, they're perfectly at liberty to do that. They can have a sign which is externally illuminated, you know, they can have a light lighting up a placard or something like that. You know, this town has had this bylaw in effect for many years, as been already said. It's been very effective. It's preserved the look of the Lower Village. I think, I agree that this is unnecessarily quick. I mean, if we were to take the attitude that, you know, every time we find a few people that are disobeying a law, we should just get rid of it, I don't know where that would end, frankly. The law serves Stowe well. I think we should continue to enforce it and just inform the businesses that they're perfectly at liberty to have whatever signs they want, as long as they're externally illuminated. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Mark Dexter, 265 Great Road. Everyone can hear me, correct? I know where I'm pulling from. So what was stated in the Planning Board meeting was a point where it said this bylaw is from 1985, and effectively, we should get with the times. So I say, yes, we should get with the times. 90% of the people here do not use open signs to find out if something's open. We use our smartphones. We use Facebook, Google, and Yelp and any other outlet we have. The idea that open sign is going to increase business illuminated is just, it doesn't fit with the times. It's not the way the market works anyways. Also, I'd like to point out the fact that, like mentioned, I live right next to Nance. They have a sign that has a light put on their signage. The illuminated sign doesn't fit the way Stowe is now. I moved to a small town with a small-town feel. I just did house hunting. You drive through Grafton, you drive through these small towns, you don't even see the signage of what the business is. It's a nice, small-town feel. That's what Stowe is. That's what Stowe is known for. That's why when people say, I moved to Stowe, they're like, oh, how'd you move to Stowe? Because of the small-town feel. Illuminated signs don't increase business, don't support, and don't do anything but make more light pollution. We have a lot of bylaws that don't let you shine lights into the air. Why would we change the bylaw that now allows us to have illuminated signs in windows? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Ross Perry, Fourth Circuit Drive. I was on the planning board when we wrote that sign bylaw. The intention was to avoid 117 becoming Route 9 with large, glaring signs. This change in the bylaw doesn't do that. This change adapts for the time. We didn't have internally illuminated LED signs back in '85. At least, we had fluorescent ones, but we didn't want huge billboard-sized signs. This bylaw is just tweaking it. It's allowing technology. It's allowing a small sign in its store that says they're open. And yes, when I drive through a shopping center, I look for something that I can see from my car without having to get up and look at the door to see if they're open. So an open sign, I think, is very helpful. This is not drastically changing the character of Stowe, and I recommend supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., yes, over here, I'll take-
Ellen Sturgis, 12 Canterbury Road, speaking as individual, not for the select board. I just want to add to what Mr. Perry said. The businesses in Stowe are having a hard enough time in the last couple of years, and this is a very small thing, that they're basically asking us to update the sign bylaw, and this is a temporary fix, as Mr. Stedman has said many times. This is going to, we need more time to think through the whole updating of the sign bylaw. But I think, right now, for, I think somebody said nine businesses, if those nine businesses need a little more support to help us know that they're open, I think we should do it.
Thank you. Mr. Stedman, did you want to respond to an earlier comment since your name was mentioned?
No, I think the last two speakers did a good job of summing it up. I will just say, this came about both with a discussion between the Planning Board and the Economic Development and Industrial Commission, both recognizing that there were business interests in town that had a very narrow issue and it needed to be addressed, and that everybody agreed that over the ensuing months here, I know my assistant is already working on doing some of the background research on sign bylaw matters, that the Planning Board was going to take this up in full when they had the time, but didn't want to have all these businesses hanging in the lurch while we did that research. So that's the purpose of this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? And seeing none, I believe we can open the vote now, and I'll keep it open for 20 seconds. This will require a two-thirds vote. All zoning changes require two-thirds votes. And about five more seconds. And we will close the vote. And we have a vote of 204 in the affirmative and 61 against, and the motion passes. Article 7.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Sections 3.10, 5.5, and 10, as stated in Sections A, B, C, D, E, F, and G of this article, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? I am seeing none. We can open the vote for 20 seconds. Pardon?
Are you getting a planning board recommendation?
So while we're waiting, Town Council had a question. We're, the Planning Board is required to have a public hearing on any article before it's allowed to appear at town meeting, and they did provide us with letters that, in fact, those public hearings were held. And I think we are done. And we had 183 votes, 171 yes and 12 no, the motion passes under Article 7. Article 8.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Sections 3.10 and 3.6.3, as stated in Sections A and B of this article, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on Article 8? Oh, we have a presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Jesse Stedman. I'm the town planner in Stowe. So what we're voting on today, this Article 8 here, are proposed zoning amendments to change the allowed uses in Stowe's industrial district. I know we just got done with a public hearing on this matter. There's been a lot of talk about it. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to mention the Master's Academy, which everybody has heard now only three times during this presentation. So I mentioned it once, and I'll mention it again. The Master's Academy is a for-profit school that's in the process of purchasing the Bose property in the industrial district. So the only thing that has really changed between the time of our Tuesday, the 26th public hearing and today, is that Master's Academy, third time, last time, is, has said that if they don't get to go forward as a for-profit use in the industrial district, then they will go forward as a nonprofit educational organization. And so I'm going to explain why that is something that we need to consider and why the actual way that we would go forward in permitting a for-profit use is really the thing that we need to be talking about today. So next slide, please. So again, for those who don't know, this is a, this would be a change in the allowed uses in the industrial district. It would affect our entire industrial district. Of course, most of that district is really already built out or spoken for at present. But you can see right there in the red outline, that's the Bose property. It's about 81 acres, and it's been the focus of this discussion. Next slide, please. So like I said, today's vote is whether the town wants to allow for-profit schools to be able to locate in this industrial district. So the details really don't matter of that for-profit school yet, and I don't say that to be flip or to be deflective. It's just that those details are going to matter. They just don't matter now, because what we're really doing now is trying to figure out, how do we want to permit a school if and when it comes forward? And are we going to allow it to exist in the first place? So we'll definitely get there if and when things come forward. So when the Planning Board first learned of the proposal for the for-profit school, they quickly created and supported an article that would allow that use to take place in the industrial district. It would keep that property on the tax rolls, and most importantly, I think, would require a special permit for that school to go forward. So basically, what a special permit does before the Planning Board is it requires a public hearing. Everybody gets a chance to come out. The immediate abutters get notified by mail. You see it in the paper. I'm sure many- many folks here have been to public hearings for special permits in the past. Further, it allows us to specifically include that prerequisite to this special permit agreement, or, I'm sorry, special permit itself, is a development agreement between the for-profit school and the board, and the select board. So the reason why that's important is there's sometimes not a lot of, there's sometimes a limit to what you can require in a special permit process. A development agreement is really a belt-and-suspenders approach. And the way I think of this is this passage of this, requiring a development agreement, allows us to make sure that whatever school goes in there, they're going to be a good neighbor. We're going to have a partnership going forward, and we do it on our terms. When we go in the other direction, next slide, please. If we were to turn down this article or if we were to push a for-profit school to instead go in the nonprofit direction, it's important to know that right now, any nonprofit school can come to Stowe. They can locate really anywhere they want, because the state law gives them an exemption that says you don't have to follow the town zoning if you have a legit nonprofit educational organization. So we would still, if we take the school's word for it, we are still looking at a school locating at the Bose property, except we lose the chance to keep that property on the tax rolls. Obviously, it's a tax-exempt nonprofit status. We don't get a chance to have a special permit. So we don't really have a chance to say, hey, what's this school actually going to look like? What are the specific things that you're going to be doing? How will you operate? What will the traffic look like? Do we need to update sidewalks and streets? And all of the stuff that we have discussions about in special permit, that's simply not going to happen. We would just react to a site plan. We're going to hope for the best, essentially. So, and you also, of course, if this, you know, if they go for it as a nonprofit status, not that it's going to be some big evil nonprofit we need to be afraid of, but the fact of the matter is we just don't get a chance to have a development agreement, which takes off the table a bunch of other things to really help ensure that we've got a good neighbor in Stowe, that we have a solid amenity for the town, rather than something that we didn't have any say in. So, next slide, please. And just bear with me while I deal with double-sided printing. Okay. So, the last thing I really want to say is that the planning board supports this article and supported it quickly, was that they are keenly aware of the alternatives that can happen in our industrial district. The industrial district, as it's written today and as it stands, was developed back in the '60s. We know that there are a variety of manufacturing, warehousing, distribution-style uses that can be done in that district. In fact, when Bose first said, hey, we're getting ready to sell, this was back during like the height of COVID, I think it was the spring of 2020, we had other folks come forward that had nothing to do with the school, but said, hey, you know, we're thinking of, you know, 475,000 feet of industrial space. We're doing some, there's probably going to have to be a distribution component, but, you know, there's going to be some updated parking, and it'll look a lot like Bose's original site plan. Well, Bose's original site plan that was approved had almost 1,000 parking spaces. It had a lot of industrial space. So, you know, when we're thinking about the villages at Stowe and the other neighborhoods that have grown up around Bose in the ensuing years, the idea of a school-campus-style use that doesn't involve that day-to-day trucking, that doesn't involve all of the things that come with industrial uses, it started to sound like a lot better bet than, than basically going with some of the other options that are still allowed today in the industrial district. So, so that's why the planning board is in such support of this article passing today. And we'll see what happens. If the, if the school comes forward, great, we have a bylaw that can control that and can work with them. And if they don't, we're right back where we were before spring of '21 when Bose announced they were going to sell. So this is the opportunity to create a new use in that district, and I'm happy to answer any questions on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the selectman had a statement to make before we take any comments.
The select board voted unanimously in favor of this article, and as has been stated, this is only the first step. We've heard the concerns of the community, and by passing this article, we're ensuring the town's interests are incorporated into the final terms of the project. We strongly urge support of this article.
Thank you. I believe this gentleman over here was the first.
Yeah, my concern is that, it sounds to me that this article is written for this business, Masters Academy, of which I've never heard of it. I don't know how many people in this room know anything about it. Can you tell us something about it so we, we know if we want to endorse a sweetheart deal with Masters Academy, please?
Mr. Stedman, you wish.
So I would just say again, we're not endorsing a deal with Masters Academy. We're allowing a for-profit private school or college to locate in Stowe, whether it's Masters Academy or not. That particular school is a private, is, the vision for that particular school is for a for-private, sports-focused academy. And I think for the sake of this, this particular vote, like, that's really as much as we need to know, and we're frankly not going to be able to have much more. In fact, like I said, a no vote here does not mean that the Masters Academy goes away. It's, this vote really just tells us how is it that we are going to permit a sports or private school in that district. And I don't mean that to be deflective. I just want to make sure that you're clear about what that vote means.
Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, I'm Ellen Anthony, 35 Harvard Road, and I have two questions. Maybe they have to do whatever. Can a school flip from being profit to nonprofit? You know, could they move in there, be a for-profit school, and then, you know, a year or two later say, no, we're nonprofit?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think that's why requiring a development agreement as part of the special permit process is so important, because that is basically a contract with the town that says, hey, you know, if we're going to go forward and we're going to approve this special permit, we want to know that you're going to do what you said you were going to do. And that's one of the things that could be considered.
Oh, I think my second question was the same thing. So, thanks.
Thank you. We'll take this gentleman over here.
Lenny Gold, 67 Old Bolton Road. I think that lady actually answered my question, which is, you know, to be sure, you know, since this is all contingent for us that this be a for-profit school, we want to make sure that if we approve it, that it remain a for-profit school and not suddenly change its mind sometime in the future, and then we lose the revenue, which was the whole purpose to begin with anyway. So if that can be done, you know, as part of the development agreement, then that sounds good.
Yeah, because this is in the, because the development agreement piece is in the bylaw, a school could come forward, we could permit it, we could live with them for five years, they could leave. Somebody else comes in, they're still, they're still bound by that same bylaw. So it's not that, so they would also be required to enter into a development agreement. So because you have something in the zoning bylaw gives you that sense of perpetuity in terms of what our expectations.
So would that development agreement then be binding on a subsequent?
It's not that the same one. It would just be that the next person who came, the next school that wanted to come forward would also have to come up with their own development agreement. So.
I say a separate end. And of course, we could also require certain things, which we normally do in planning with setbacks and noise control and things of that nature as well. Sounds good.
Yes, ma'am, over here.
I want to know what's the difference, or if there is any difference in revenue from a for-profit school and an industrial complex? Is, are they, would they be the same?
The town administrator would like to answer that.
So there's no difference between a for-profit school in an industrial district versus any other district. The difference would be if they are for-profit, they continue to pay taxes, which currently Bose is paying about $213,000 a year. With a for-profit school, they would also pay the, the value of the tuition that's being collected on that property, and they would pay the cost of any development, which they're estimating about $35 million worth of improvements to that site. So that would all come in. If they were to be nonprofit, we would not get the tax revenue. We would get the value of the permit for the work, but we would not get the assessed value of the tuition or the additional construction or renovation.
Thank you. One other real quick question. You're, I'm a little confused. Your first slide, to me, indicated that it's a done deal. Is, is that true that no matter how we vote, it's going to be either a nonprofit or a profit school? No other industry is possibly going to be.
I think the town administrator can address that.
Excuse me?
I think the town administrator can address that.
Yes. So I spoke with Peter Masters, who is developing this Masters Academy International on Wednesday, and he has given me his blessing to say they are coming regardless. They have a purchase and sale that they are closing on in the next two weeks. There is no contingency to their PNS. They are coming to Stowe with the proposed plan. What this group is voting on today is whether we will allow them to stay for-profit, which they very much want to be. If the zoning changes fail, then they will come in nonprofit. But they are coming. We will have no control or very little control over what comes to town if they stay, if they go nonprofit, where we have control if they are for-profit. But they are coming.
Thank you. Over here, I'll take a.
Irene Levitt, and I live at 27 MacIntosh in the villages. And I am extremely concerned about having this academy very close to the villages. It's basically in our backyard. And part of the Masters Academy is that they're, they're talking about 700 students. And many of those, I don't know what the number would be, but boarding students. And I also am concerned about what is the definition of students? Are these people that, children or, or students that have issues related to alcohol or other types of drug problems? And this, since this is right in our backyard, I am very concerned about that. I am also concerned that this has, this really is a zoning change for Masters. It's not a zoning change for any other school. This is, this is almost a done deal. And that's what I said at the meeting on October 26. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Ross Perry, 4 Circuit Drive. I think a school in that area could be a lot more attractive than a warehouse with trucks. I think that a college town could be exciting, that sort of atmosphere, whether you're bringing in students, you're bringing in teachers, you're bringing in customers for our local businesses. I would much rather have them patronizing our local businesses, maybe helping us get a restaurant, probably more so than if we have truck drivers in a warehouse. Now, it sounds like the school may come in one form or the other. If they're coming, I would much rather get tax revenue from them than not. So I think this is a good plan for Stowe. And again, to the planning board, thank you for planning. This is a good effort. I like to see us reacting ahead of time so we can plan and not trying to backpedal and fit with something that we don't like in the end. So this is a good move, and I recommend that you support it. Thank you.
I think this young lady over here has been waiting the longest. I'll take you next.
Oh, and you called me a young lady. Thank you so much. Pam Weathers, 89 West Acton Road. There was an interesting little part here that posed a question of mine. It says onsite dormitories for students and staff. And I went, gee, does that affect our housing categories in any way, like affordable or whatever? Has anybody considered that?
The town administrator, I think you.
So it will not count towards anything affordable. Their proposal would have five residential homes for the headmaster and so forth. I will just clarify, and although Ross's point is correct, this is not a college. It is grade six through 12, but it would function very much like a college setting.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Mark Dexter, 259 Great Road. As the previous gentleman mentioned, it would be definitely better to have a school there rather than the 18-wheelers plowing down 117. It already is a major artery. I live on it.
A little louder. I'm having trouble.
Sorry about that. It would be much better to have the school here rather than a warehouse that goes down 117. I live on 117. It is a busy road already to begin with. I don't want the, I'd rather have the additional traffic of sixth graders or 12th graders walking down to the restaurants, to like the cafes and such, rather than the 18-wheelers that an industrial zone will bring. And you've got to remember, this is an industrial zone right now, which means any sort of industry just has to move in. They don't really need special permitting for much, much to actually move in a whole Amazon warehouse. It's already zoned for Amazon to come move in. Putting a zone of a school, and, sounds better. It's a better alternative. And it's lots of disposable income for taxes, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, my name is Jane Anne Crumka from 139 Kingland Road. I would concur with the last speaker and with Mr. Perry. But I also want to, I just want, I stood up because I'm taken aback that anyone is afraid of children coming to their backyard. And the children that are coming, their parents are paying, I don't know if you read the proposal, but a really large amount of tuition for them to be eventually Division I NCAA athletes. These are very serious students. They practice, I don't know if you read the proposal, four hours of athletic pursuits a day. They are too exhausted to vandalize your home. That's, that's it.
I'll take this, this lady over here. Yes.
Hi, I'm Alexis Mena, 57 Old Bolton Road, across from the Bose property. I wanted to echo the previous comments. We definitely urge people to vote yes for this. We would prefer campus, you know, setting across the street from us rather than the truckers. Do we love the idea of five or 700 teens living right across from us? Not necessarily, but we prefer them to the trucks for sure. I had two questions, though. One was about the town administrator's letter that was issued recently, and it mentioned that the tax revenue from the for-profit school would have the effect of lowering everyone else's taxes. Can you just clarify why that's the case? Would the tax rate actually go down for residential properties?
So, yes. The way the taxes are calculated is we have an overall dollar amount that we need to raise through taxes. So if you have a business paying a significant amount of money, that will offset all other residential taxes. Now, can I guarantee that everyone's taxes will go down? No. But the impact to the tax rate will decrease if this property happens.
Thank you. And then my second question is, was the Bose, can you just clarify, because I think there's a little maybe confusion, or just I don't have a great understanding of it. But was the Bose property initially allowed with a special permit? And if so, could, say, Masters Academy goes away for some reason and an industrial use wants to come in, could they just occupy the Bose property and continue industrial use without any additional further review? If they wanted to expand to maybe build out Bose's original vision for the site, would that be allowed without any use, you know, or if they wanted to make any changes to the property, would that trigger a new special permit? Can you just clarify the planning requirements for an industrial use if it were to come in?
Mr. Stedman, I think you're.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great zoning process question. So I think the most permissible scenario is that an industrial use comes in that looks, acts, and smells just like Bose. Nonetheless, they would still have to modify the special permit. And through the special permit modification process, even, I still think that's even a stretch. But even if it were to go that route, still get the public hearing, still get all new conditions, all new findings. You still get the full ability to vet what that new use looks like. So I would say that, that the answer would be yes, the town is still in the driver's seat, even if an industrial use were to come back.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, Debbie Woods, Great Road. Change is scary, especially when we don't have control of a change. So I think it's very important for everybody in this room to listen very carefully to what our town administrator said. They are coming, period, end of discussion. They have a purchase and sale that they are going to execute in two weeks. Done. So now, the only thing we have at our fingertips is do we or do we not have any control as to what they do? The only way we're going to have control is to allow a for-profit to come into this place. Approving this, approving this article gives us that control. It also preserves our tax base. Two things, I'm, I live on Great Road, so yes, all these things impact me, too, but I do not want my taxes to go up, and I want some control and some say over what this academy does, because they are coming. So I support this article and recommend the support of this article.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Corinne Green, 63 Taylor Road. I'm in favor of the article, and I would much prefer to see a school that we can have some control over what is done versus an industrial site. But my question is, for the school, from the school's perspective, why would a school choose to go the non, choose to go the profit route when they wouldn't have to pay the taxes as a nonprofit? And does it give them some huge advantage in terms of how much really they can take in? They would have to be investing an awful lot of money in this renovation than at all. So I'm just wondering, from their perspective, why, why would they choose the?
I think the town administrator is looking to answer that.
Yes. So, number one, they want to make money. As I mentioned, they are looking to invest $35 million over the period of the next five to 10 years in the property. They paid approximately $14 million to purchase the property, and they have a number of investors that are backing it. They are really hoping to stay here long-term, and they're hoping that by year 15 or so, is what they told me, that they expect to see a return on their investment. is what they told me, that they expect to see a return on their investments. But they want to make money.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Yeah, and just to echo that, can you hear me? My question was, we're sure that that's not an idle threat. And, oh, I'm sorry, Brian Radigan, 87 Wheeler. Them going nonprofits, that's a credible, that's a credible assertion from them?
Yes. They have invested a lot of time and money in developing their plans, so they do not want to walk away. They like this campus, they like what it looks like. Quite frankly, they were very concerned. They were on the public hearing Tuesday night and hearing the negative feedback. They had an investor meeting and decided that they will go nonprofit, because this is what they're committed to. I don't think it's an idle threat. I think it will happen if they, if this fails today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Martin Meyer, 25 Brookmill Road. I have a question about.
A little louder, if you could, please.
Sorry. Martin Meyer, 25 Brookmill Road. I have a question about future planning potential in this area. We've mentioned a couple of times that it's the sort of site where you might want restaurants and bookstores and coffee shops and that sort of thing in the area. Are there any possible sites near this site that that could actually happen? Or are we looking at future rezoning to do that?
I will let Mr. Stedman answer that.
So, there are, there's a couple of small business district parcels in and around that whole Hudson Road, Route 117 corridor there. A use like this could put pressure on to see some changes there. We don't really know yet what that might look like. The, the bylaw change also includes allowance for them to do the kinds of accessory things that you would expect on a, a campus, so that they'll have some of their own food service and stuff like that. But I, I would expect that this will change the dynamic a little bit, and we can take a look at what are those business districts nearby going to need to kind of respond and react. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Barbie Wolfenden, 23 Heather Lane. I'm sorry, but I still don't quite understand. My question has to do with, is Bose locked into selling to Masters? So, so some people are asking, like, they're saying they prefer, or they don't want industrial, but that's not the issue. Is that correct? There's no chance for an industrial usage?
That is, so there is no contingency in the PNS. The PNS has been negotiated, and they are passing papers in two weeks.
Okay. Then why are some people still talking about?
I don't know.
Okay.[1470.33][1470.33](laughter) Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I thought this would go the distance, but we can go to a vote. This is a zoning change, so it will require a two-thirds vote. And we will open voting. Yeah, it'll take a couple of seconds. We weren't quite ready. There we go. We are open for voting. I'm going to hold this for 30 seconds, because I believe the majority of people are here for this article. Even though we've had, we're already up to 250 votes. We had almost 300 people check in. We might actually be over 300 at this point. And we have about five more seconds. So, make sure that you have a number, a one or a two showing on your voting machine. One is for yes, two is for no. And I'm going to close the vote. We had 270 votes, 260 yes, and 10 no, so the motion passes. Do we have a motion for Article 9?
Moving on. Okay, if you're going to leave, please leave quietly so I can read the motion. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 1.3 and 9.2.7.14, as stated in Sections A and B of this article. And further, that non-subjective changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
We have a motion in a second. Before I do anything, I will remind everyone, if you're leaving, please make sure that you drop off your clicker and the voting card in one of the boxes as you go out. And I don't believe we have any presentations, so are there any questions or comments on the motion under Article 9? There's some people getting up. I'm just making sure they're going towards the back and not the front. So, I believe there are no questions or comments. We can proceed to a vote. And voting is open for 20 seconds. And again, make sure that you have a one or a two showing on your clicker. And while we're waiting, I'll thank the town administrator for giving me this very fashionable Stowe face mask, instead of the, the blue ones that I was wearing. All right, we have about five more seconds. And we're closed. We had 171 votes cast, 158 yes, and 13 no. That's clearly more than two-thirds, so the motion passes. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Sections 1.3, 5.4.9, and 7.3, as stated in Sections A, B, and C of this article. And further, that non-subjective changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments about this? More people leaving, so seeing none. This will require, again, a two-thirds vote, so we will open the voting. And I'll keep it open in about another 15 seconds. While we're waiting, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I know with COVID and the weather, this is, this is a little stressful coming out in a crowd for a lot of people. And it's very important that you, that you came and did the town's business here. And we, I'll give it about another three or four seconds. And we still have a couple of votes coming in. And I think we're done. 169 votes were cast. There were 161 yes and eight no, so the motion passes. I believe we're ready for one final motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the meeting be dissolved.
We have a second. You have a motion in a second. We will open voting. Actually, I'll take it as a hand vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? And the meeting is dissolved. Thank you again for coming. And again, don't forget to.
Well done.[1790.12][1790.12](applause)